My Burbank Talks presents another episode of Meet the Candidate. The show where we invite anyone appearing on the Burbank ballot in the 2024 election to join us here and give our listeners a chance to learn about their background and the issues important to them. Now, let's join our podcast.
Hello Burbank, very sure here with you once again, and it's time for another Meet the Candidate episode. Today, we go into the school board race and we have ourselves Tom Crowder with us, who's going to be a candidate in the trustee division, trustee area one, I'm sorry. You have to get used to this nonsense that the school board is giving us to worry about. So Tom is lifelong Burbank, well, just about a lifelong Burbank resident. He actually moved here at eight years old. He went to, he went through the Burbank school system and graduated from Burrows. And at that time, he actually went on and got a social science degree from Cal State LA. Went later on to get a master's from Azusa Pacific. And then, and then he went on to get a doctorate in educational leadership from USC. So I guess no Trojans and all that stuff for you.
Right on.
There you go, for all you people out there like that. He's taught, he was taught at Burrows, he taught special education and honors English and AP English too?
No.
Just honors, okay.
Honors, English and English 11 for you.
He's then moved up those ranks, became, after being a vice principal, he became a principal both in the Glendale Unified District and in the Burbank Unified District. He then left that job and he is currently the senior vice president of Leadership Development. For what's, what company?
It's a nine charter school network, nine school charter network called Bright Star Schools.
Bright Star Schools.
Yeah, so they've got schools in like Baldwin Village, West Adams area, a cluster in the valley, and then three schools in Koreatown, so it's nine total.
Excellent. He's married with two kids. They're in the Burbank school system now too. And like I say, he's running for the Board of Education trustee area one. So that's enough of the written down stuff we have for you.
You covered it.
I, we tried to. So you moved here at eight years old. Where did you move here from?
I'm originally from Washington DC.
You can say it, go ahead.
Redskin, I was lifelong redskin fan, yeah, and now commanders.
How do you feel the name changed?
I'm not a fan of the name, so I usually say Washington Football Team. But yeah, originally from DC, my dad moved us out here in 1986. I always tell people he was going to sell the million dollar screenplay. Recently retired from selling insurance, so that didn't work out, but it did bring me to Burbank. And as you mentioned, I'm a byproduct of Burbank Unified, Bret Hart, Luther Burrows was my pathway. And ironically, after I did 10 years in the classroom at Burrows, I wound up doing most of my administration. On the other side of Burbank Unified, I was in a mirror and then Burbank High before going over to Glendale, so.
I always believe in the transparency stuff, so people, you know, I've known Tom for a very long time. In fact, he played left field for us at Burrows when I was coaching there.
Correct.
And did a very good job. He actually made the position his. He took a lot of pride in the position. And we did very well with him as a, our left fielder. So I can't remember what his batting average was, of course, but I know that.
You know that I still remember, went under 400 at the end of the season, the very last game and ended up at 391.
Oh, okay. Well, there you go. And I hope you saw a lot of fastballs, which is always a good thing.
I appreciated that, yeah. I could never hit a breaking ball. I tell my kids that now on the travel team I coach.
So when you left Burrows and you went to, now you first started off with USC. And because of conflicts and just time constraints, you decided, and of course financially, you found it was better to go to Cal State LA. But why did you want to get into education?
Well, honestly, and I don't know if you remember this, but when I was graduated, when I graduated from Burrows, teaching was like the furthest thing from my mind. If you can find an old yearbook, senior plans, I'm supposed to be working with alongside Chris Berman on ESPN, right? I thought I was going to do sports journalism. I think you remember, I used to work for Eric Sonheimer, Daily News, then the LA Times. So I thought that was going to be my pathway. I wanted to stay around sports.
Because I'm born in, you're telling me there's no money in journalism whatsoever.
That's true. There wasn't about that though. I wanted to stay around sports. And end of my senior year, my parents were going through a separation. I decided to be at USC and close to home. And that got me on the field still at Burrows. I was the freshman baseball coach for Coach Vai and yourself. And I loved it. And that became, you know, that remained my family. You know, my other family. And I kind of threw myself into that. And at the end of the first year undergrad, I had some panicky, I was panicking about how I was going to Ford USC, decided to go over to Cal State LA. It was cheaper, so I could literally charge a quarter. It was a quarter system. So after I paid off the fall, I go to the winter, go to the spring, still able to finish in four years. And at that time, by that time, I knew I wanted to teach and coach. And my former Spanish teacher, Emilio Rios, he was the co-principal at Burrows at the time. He wound up offering me a position in special education. Didn't know it at the time, but that certainly made me a better teacher, a better coach, later a better parent, and I'd like to think a better person. So I did that for 10 years and also had the opportunity to run the school newspaper, which was the other thing I liked to do when I was a high school student. So I ran the smoke signal and taught the journalism class for five years. And just, you know, a lot of experiences that looking back on, I'm better for. And when I eventually decided to do school administration, I think those experiences helped me be a better administrator. So feel fortunate that things just kind of fell into place, lined up the way that they did. As you know, I spent 13 years with the Burrows baseball program, seven as the head coach. And those were fun times as well. And now I just got back from Cooperstown with my son's 12U team that I coach. And we're on to the 13U season now. So again, things just kind of cycle and, and a good cycle right now, whether middle schooler in the middle, middle school and my daughter, a high schooler now. I don't know how that happened.
But oh, you blinked.
I blinked.
You blinked. Then now, does your, your son or daughter share the love for the Washington Football Team?
My son is willing. They haven't been very good in his lifetime. In fact, they've been terrible.
Very good, really in your lifetime lately either.
I'm not, yeah. When, when, the last time they were great was when I was his age, but yeah, he's, he's willing. You know, and the rest of the family tolerates it, but they did, they do follow my love of sports. Both are very active, both in sports and in the arts. So it's, it's fun to do the kid things through the parent lens.
Let's, let's stay on this, on the sports subject for a little bit here, because of course that's near and dear to my heart. And I think many others. And the Burbank schools have really cut any kind of financial support for extracurricular activity, you know, for the, for the, for drama, for oh, what, before we arts and sports. I know in baseball that all they pay for is they pay a coach and they don't pay very, very much. A coach makes around $16 an hour compared to McDonald's pays $20 an hour, but regardless. But all they pay for is really a coach and they give you a facility to play on. They did not pay for uniforms, for equipment, for, for anything whatsoever.
Right.
And they're asking all these different groups to go out and fundraise. And they fundraise, but the problem is how many places are there really to fundraise in Burbank? With all these different students and all these different programs, they all wind up going to the same places and draining till individuals don't want to give anymore. So what we, what are you going to do to look at that? And, and you know, I get it. They always say, we have no money, we have no money, but yet other places do have money. And other places have, you know, building new pools, they're building, you know, new tracks, they're building all sorts of stuff. But in Burbank, we seem to have no money for anything. So how do you feel about the extra? We're getting to all the other things in a second, but let's just start with extracurricular. How would you fix that problem so we can be more inclusive to all, all the, the students and make it easier on the families to, you know, to pay for things?
Yeah. So there was a lot of your question there, right? A lot of layers. If I keep it with extracurriculars, the reality is that by high school, you know, parents sort of specialize. Whatever their kids are doing, they're doing. So if your kid, if your kid's thing is choir, then you're a choir booster. If your kid's thing is a sport, then you are a supporter of that program. The PTSA does a lot of great advocacy work and that is a connection to the campus. But the reality is the, the parents do specialize. And then, as you said, there's a lot of fundraising involved when you decide to do one of the great programs. And we do have some great programs, but they are literally on the backs of talented kids, hardworking teachers who are their directors or their coaches. And it is a big lift. It is a big lift. What you mentioned baseball, because we've got that in common and, you know, a portion of the transportation budget. Otherwise, it's a contribution expectation for, for the players.
It's a hundred percent, the, our favorite buses now.
Yeah, some umpires, but not all of them, just at all levels and, you know, league games only and whatnot. So there, there's not a lot of support for the athletics right now. So parents fundraise, kids fundraise, same thing with visual and performing arts. So it is a constant and you're right, we're not a big enough town and the same people get asked again and again and again. So, you know, that is the reality in most places. I think, you know, part of that answer is re-engaging with the Burbank community. You know, we, we could do better. We need to do better. I think the district's at its best when it's working, you know, hand in hand with, with the city. And I don't know, that's happening right now. So when we're engaged and on the same page, I think there will be support for those programs. I think the schools have to continue to celebrate and recognize those programs. You know, I'm sure we'll get into declining enrollment and what that's forecast for the next 10 years and all that. So you, you have to have these programs and you have to celebrate them to, to maintain enrollment, to bring people in. The, you know, the, the truth is everything's expensive. And so fund, some fundraising, that's every high school you're going to come into. You're, you're accurate that other places find ways to, you know, get bonds through and have facilities for their programs. Like that's happened other places, that's going to need to happen here. And that's, that's another conversation. But that's, that's a piece of the puzzle, right? Fundraising, piece of the puzzle. You know, keeping engaged with the community so that you, you have business partners, piece of the puzzle. And you got to put it all together and make it whole. It is, it's complicated. In terms of our facilities, the reality is that the high schools are not that old, but they weren't constructed all well, all that well in some cases. And there was maintenance that was, permanent maintenance that was not done. And so there, things are deteriorating much quicker than they should. And we've got a, you know, a very expensive problem on our hands. So I don't know that you, you can't fundraise your way out of those realities.
Well, and the problem is also the city can't give you money.
Correct.
We can't, you can't get tax money from the city.
Right.
To help the schools. They're independent entities.
Correct.
So while the city can give you some support type things, they, they can't.
Yeah, I'm not speaking specifically of the city. I mean, the community at large, right? There are business partners that, that the, the schools need to be able to continue to rely on. You know, things, things such as that. And again, I believe Burbank's at its best when we're working together to solve some of the problems that you've already mentioned.
You were a principal in Burbank, at Burbank High School. And I thought you were doing a good job and enjoyed, enjoyed your job. And you were one of like, oh, over a dozen principals to quit in like an 18 month period. What went wrong so badly that all these principals bailed out? Because in the past, in this space, we lived in Burbank our whole lives. And once in a while, you, a principal would leave every year or two, maybe from one school.
Right.
But to have the amount of principals leaving the district, there's, and it's not just financial.
Sure.
If there's something else going on, what do you think is going on that all these principals couldn't take it anymore?
Right. Well, so a lot of it did start post pandemic, right? And so once in a lifetime pandemic, and that made a hard job harder. So I do think that that was a part of it. And there's truth that in the field right now, education's seeing a lot of turnover in teaching positions and in leadership positions. And it's unfortunate. I think Burbank is hopefully back on the up, but definitely had a moment where, you know, people, there was mass exodus. There was the departure of folks who probably should have been lifers. And, you know, and it's complex, but at the end of the day, what I shared people is that in my opinion, you know, I was the second principal to leave out of more than 10 in a 15 month window, like you said. And I think we were in the midst of a leadership crisis where, you know, we were coming off a pandemic, doing our best to run our schools and not always feeling supported from above. And that's.
So, so what would you do to change that?
Well, as again, hopefully we're back on the up a little bit. Some of the, some of the folks who were not feeling supported have moved on. And some of the folks who could have supported those folks more have also moved on. And, you know, hopefully we're, it's, it's the start of a new era. I think in terms of what I would want to do as a school board member, if I'm fortunate enough to get the opportunity, is I would want to make sure, again, we work together. You need everybody in, you need everybody on the same page. You need to support your teachers and work with the union. You need to support your site level leaders and balance that this is the district must do. We're all on the same page and we're doing this together. Here's what you have autonomy of at your site. And we want to support those endeavors and the things that you want to do that make, you know, John Mery Middle School unique, or Luther Bryant Middle School unique, or Dolores Schwartz Middle School unique. And you've got to let the, the leaders in the building, you know, swing big, miss small and, and, you know, make their school special. The school culture is important. And then at the district level, you know, I think it's perfectly understandable that there's disagreements behind a closed door, but out in the public, you got to get on the same page. And the board and the cabinet need to work together and find solutions to big issues. And we've got a lot of big issues right now. Take your pick, funding, enrollment, student achievement data, wellness, I could go on, right? So there's, there's a lot of big picture items that need to be tackled and we got to tackle them together. And I think that's what we weren't doing, you know, at our low point, 20, 21, 22 school years. And hopefully we're back on the up.
Financial responsibility is in a lot of people's minds with the, with the board. And they went through a stretch where they actually gave superintendent Matt Hill. They ripped up his contract in September, gave him a brand new contract. All his contract had not expired until June of next year. And by June next year, then they fired him after giving him a raise. And because of giving him that new contract, they didn't have to pay him for another additional year. They had to also get a new superintendent. So they brought in John Paramo, who's actually done a very good job, very happy John Paramo. But what I don't understand is they then gave him $50,000 more than they had just given Matt Hill. And to me, I don't, especially in the district that has financial trouble. And there's been other cases of that with other administrators having their contracts grouped up midway through and given raises also. So how do you tell people we're going to be more, how do you get them on board? You wouldn't be more financially responsible when there's a budget crisis going on?
I don't know if there was a question in there. I'm, I would agree with you that the optics of that are terrible. You know, ideally, if you're renewing a superintendent, second, third, fourth contract, you've got a 5-0 board because that means that person's doing a good job. And they did not have that, right? It was 3-2 after a delay. And yes, you're right, to renew somebody, give them a contract extension and then terminate less than a year later and have to pay for that. Not, not ideal, not a good thing and should not have happened. And then, you know, with Dr. Paramo, I've known him a very long time. 95% of my experience with him are nothing but positive. I don't know that the board set, my only issue is that I don't know that the current board set him up for success by having no process in selecting him as superintendent, right? He went from acting to interim to appointment. And you've got to have a process when you hire a classroom teacher. You have to have a process when you hire an assistant principal, a principal. Why should the leader be any different? And, you know, I agree with you. I think he's doing some good things. However, you're not setting someone up for success when you have a process for everything but that position. And I wish they had thought through that a little more. At the end of the day, you know, in an interim role, he might've wound up being the guy or through a thorough process, like the president, board president at the time, Steve Ferguson had promised like a thorough process. You, you might've wound up having him be the guy because he knows the community, he knows the schools, he knows the issues. But it never hurts to go through that process. And I think that's the one thing I would question, not knowing all the facts.
Let's also look at the decision they've now made to break the school district up into districts. I think it's, you know, both the school district and the city got a letter. And the letter wasn't exactly, it was a kind of a form letter and said, if you don't do this, we're going to sue you unless you pay us money. And the city said, let's go after it, you know? I mean, we're not going to do that. The school district immediately kind of caved in. They've gone to districts. You go to the school district website, I can't find maps or anything about which district is where. I think 90% of the people in Burbank do not know anything about districts. They don't know what district they live in, how the districts were drawn. And the fact they're not able to, right now, two fifths of the city cannot even vote for a school board member in this election. So how, would you get, when you get back, if you made it to the board, would you try to change it back to our old system or how do you feel about this?
Well, I mean, I feel like at the moment, it is what it is, right? This is what we have for 2024. I find it a little odd that the school didn't wait, the, the school district didn't wait for some direction from how the city was going to go about it. And that now we have, you know, one that's still nine candidates at large and, and then one that's district, right? I think that's a little peculiar. And again, that speaks to my need to see the school re-engage with the community and the city at large. So I'll say that. I think at this point, you know, the map, I found it. You're right, I had to look for it. When they were discussing potential boundaries and what it might look like, I went to a virtual meeting. I think I was one of two guests that day. So the messaging on that could have been better. Communication on that could have been better. The map's there, but it's, it's not readily available. And you're right, I run into people every single day. They go, hey, you got my vote. And I say, well, actually you don't live in my district, so you can't, my trustee area. So, you know, you can't vote for me, but I'd love your support in other ways. We can talk about that. And a lot of people don't know that we're district. So I've learned that just in the first month or so of officially being a candidate. And, you know, that's something that's going to be important in the next few months is making sure people are aware of that. And if you're, you know, in an area where there's a, a race that you take the time to vote.
I know one of our school board members is running unopposed. I'm just saying, because nobody knows in that area to, to run against her. And can't do anything about that. Let's move on a little bit to, right now in the, in the, our schools, they used to routinely, elementary, middle and high schools were recognized as blue ribbon schools, California distinguished schools. You can go drive by any school and you can see on the wall, it's nice paint up there. California is it, but the years are now all past years. We're not getting any of that lately now. What would you do to try to bring that back, that prestige back to our school system? I mean, what, is it an internal thing? Is it something, is it financial? Is it, I mean, what's the reason that Burbank is now being overlooked for these honors?
It's not necessarily overlooked. So again, we have some great leaders, we have some great teachers, we have amazing kids. So there's still a lot of good happening in Burbank. In terms of getting recognized as a California distinguished school or a blue ribbon school, you know, there's a, there's a process. When, and when your site's up, you're eligible to apply and you, you work together with your school, your school leader and your teacher leaders and you, and you put together an application. And then you wait and you find out if you got it or not. And, you know, it's, it's not a perfect process, but it gives you the opportunity to reflect on what you're doing well, you know, and, and apply for those distinctions. It's not that we're not.
Do you think every school is, is applying for that or some are just not even bothering? And maybe that's one of the problems.
It just, if it's, if it's important to the district and it's an expectation for the school leaders to do, then I know most will take the time to do it, but it's a, it's a time commitment and a process. And, you know, I don't know, I still very friendly with recent principals or in current principals in Burbank. And I know that they're good for it in terms of writing the report and celebrating their kids and celebrating their programs. And so you, Burbank has some elite programs that you can certainly write California distinguished school applications for and get recognized if that's the priority. I think for me, you know, those things look good on a mural, like you said, and those things look good when someone's considering buying a home in your community. But the, the most important thing is that we're aiming for a hundred percent of our high school senior classes graduating on time. And that all or most of them are able to meet A through G requirements to be eligible for a four-year college and identified as college and/or career ready by the California dashboard. Again, Ed Data, it is what it is. We're, we're like, we're like data rich and analysis poor in a lot of ways. And the California dashboard is not a perfect reflection of what's working and what's not working in your schools. But it is the report card. If someone's thinking of buying a home in Burbank, that's something they may look at. And when they see that only 49% of the recent seniors who graduated were identified as prepared for college and career on the California dashboard, that's a concern. Like there's no reason that we can't be right there with like Crescent Valley High School, which is a like school over in Glendale, right? Like we can be right there. And the state, the state achievement data for English and math scores are much higher at a place like CV or a La Cañada than they are in Burbank right now. So that's something worth unpacking. The same thing with like, again, our grad rates are good, but we should be going for a hundred percent. That was one thing that Dr. Hill and I agreed on. And we should be getting a higher percentage of our kids A through G and eligible for a four-year college. And we should be getting certainly more than half college and career ready, just based on all the good things that are happening at the high schools with the NAF Academy programs, the number of kids that do take AP and honors courses. And the fact that we have some really great pathways at both high schools.
I'm going to push back a little on you.
Okay.
You, you were a 4.0 and I was a 2.8. And is, I agree that the goal should always be to get every kid graduating, every kid four-year college ready. I get all that, but what about the kid who wants to just get his diploma? He's the 2-0, 2-5 kid, but he wants to go on into an industry. He wants to, to be a car mechanic, he wants to be a plumber, he wants to be electrician, he wants to go work at studios. Things, very good opportunities that, and those are jobs that we need in our society. Because, you know, let's face it, if your plumbing goes out, who are you going to call? You're going to call a.
Oh, no, absolutely. I don't disagree with you.
So we've, we've lost all of our, or not all, but we've lost many of our, our shop classes, our industrial classes. So do you think we should bring some of those back and try to prepare some of those students who have those interests? So they have a better, you know, learning situation to graduate with?
Yeah, well, you're right. I have friends that I went to high school with, you know, I got one who sold doors and windows and he's out earned me several years. I've got others who are mechanics or electricians and, and they do quite well. And they're, they are industries where there's great opportunities.
Really?
For sure. So I agree with you. You don't necessarily find that pathway in high school. For me, I think today's high schools do need to prepare kids for some college because they're, and behind the kids that start in a four-year school right away, or even a, a junior college, which is a good opportunity, California Community Colleges can be free now, you know, for most kids. Even the kids that don't jump right to those opportunities, there are a lot of kids that go out in the real world for a little bit and then try some schooling. Or they get into a trade tech and those programs have changed a little bit. And while they still remain hands-on and whatnot, there's still the need to be able to function like in a, a school environment, right? A formal learning environment. So the high school's job is to prepare kids for all pathways. And at the end of the day, if you're getting them for your college ready, they're likely to be more successful in the workforce, they're likely to be more successful at a community college, they're likely to be more successful at a four-year school, whatever, whatever they choose. I think the reality is today's teens and then today's college graduates, they're far more like, they don't settle into a job and then do it until retirement. They're going to explore. They're going to probably have a very windy path to whatever they wind up ultimately doing. Some of what they do will require a degree, some will not. But those skills, what common course is supposed to do is develop skills, right? Those skills that they should be learning and mastering in high school will transfer to whatever they do next. Workforce, college, apprentice program, whatever. And I think that, like, we're saying the same thing, we just see it a little bit differently in terms of what the school's role is and all of that.
Understandable.
Yeah.
You are, when I was at, I used to teach at Crispie.
Right.
We had, and the rule of school was get every kid into four-year school. And I've found over the years that the pressure then for the kids to get in, you know, they would get four-year ready, but they would go there for half a semester or, and they're out, they're back here. And one of two reasons, one is they didn't want to move to some other, you know, state to go to school. They live in California. But two is financial. And what they don't tell you, I think, is that Juco's, junior colleges have the same exact class structure for the first two years that a four-year school does, the same classes.
Yeah.
So I, do you think that the, that one of the things that the Burbank schools should do is when the counselors, I'm not sure how the counselors work, because you know more about administration than I do, but they should look at the, the economic structure that each student has and say, yeah, he, he could, we get him four-year ready. But I think a two-year college investor here right now financially for his family. So how do you feel about that?
Those are two things. One is, you know, counselor caseloads are too large. And we need to bring them down a little bit if they're expected to do the kind of work that you're just described. Because they do do a four-year plan. My daughters will be coming up soon because she's a ninth grader and they'll look revisit it once each year. But in terms of really digging down and having kids look at what might be the best pathway for them, when you have caseloads that are twice what the recommended average is for a counseling caseload, you're not going to get that attention as a student that you need and that the counselor wants to give each student, right?
Kids are running into the cracks in a way.
Well, and yeah, that's what I would say. It's like, again, my first class at Burbank High as principal during that virtual graduation was 661 students and they're smaller right now. The, when I graduated from Burrows in 1996, it was 400 something. And the typical classes right now are somewhere in between them. And when you have a class, a senior class of more than 500 students, both high schools are going to have over 100 kids with 4.0s. Those kids are hard to screw up. They're going to take AP and honors classes and they're going to ace them all the way through. And that's your, your cohort of kids who are likely to go to a four-year school right away, not all, but most. And then you have students with known barriers, English language learners, students with special needs, students with other challenges like maybe low socioeconomic realities. They're going to get support, you know, through the, through the, through traditional schools, right? Through special education, through ELD programs, et cetera. And then there's this big chunk of kids in the middle. And I think that what you just said, I do agree with. I think we need to serve that big chunk of kids in the middle better. It is not difficult to walk through high school with your head down in the hall, eke out somewhere between a 2-0 and a 3-3 and just be there, right? And put your four years in. But ideally, every kid would connect each year with several adults on campus, have a program that they're passionate about and have some goals at the end of graduation of what they want to do next. And that could include many things. And I think the other part to your question that I want to address. And I think the other part to your question that I want to address is I do think AP and honors classes are good for, you know, GPA bump purposes and whatnot. And they do their part in preparing kids for college. But I'm happy that the district's explored more dual enrollment opportunities last few years and partnerships with local junior colleges and kids are able to get college credits earlier. I'd love for our schools to take a look at early college programs, like what they have happening at Hoover High right now, where kids are sometimes graduating, not just with the high school diploma, but with an AA. So those are some things I'd love to see work with the district on if I'm fortunate to get the opportunity to be a board member. Cause I think those are, I think that's going to be the new normal in the years ahead and things that we have to look at. So I also agree with you that junior college is a great pathway for a lot of folks. The potential to be free now and something you can start on much earlier. And we just want to make sure we give kids that information so that they can make that decision for them.
You taught, um, what, seven or eight years of special education?
Almost 10, yeah, almost 10 actually.
And my hat's off to you. That's, that's, that's got to be a very difficult at times, you know? It's, it's not easy at times because sometimes emotional needs or physical, whatever it could be. How did you, how did, first, how did you navigate through that? What, what did you find? And how do you think we're doing now with that? And would you, if you had a chance to change anything in that, that whole area, what would you do? The questions aren't easy here.
Right. No.
Okay.
It's, it's a great question.
Knowledge of each other or not, I'm still after.
Yeah, I got you. So, you know, yes, a, a good special educator is truly special. And I think you, you have a shelf life unless you're an extraordinary individual, because it is hard. The model that I taught in is very different than what's considered best practice today. And I, like I said, I look back on my 10 years doing special education and most of it was in a special education classroom with occasional opportunities to be included, fully included in the JEDDAN environment. And now we know best practice is to try to get, um, students with IEPs, students with learning disabilities into general education, you know, at least more than half their day, if, if not more when possible, provided that you can support them with the accommodations in their IEP, right? So I just said a lot, but breaking it down easier. You know, how do I think we're doing? I think we're like most districts trying to figure special education out. Co-teaching where a special educator works with a JEDDAN teacher in a JEDDAN classroom and supports the students. Like that is best practice, that's what the research says. The reality is our class sizes are too large, our clusters of students with IEPs are too large to really do it well. You, you have to be fortunate. Remember when we were talking about athletic programs or a thriving arts program? Those programs are special built on the special adults. The co-teaching that we do in most districts is totally reliant on having a great JEDDAN teacher willing and wanting those kids in class and a great special educator willing to work together. Like co-teaching is a marriage, those are the ones where they thrive, but they're few and far betweens, right? So I think to your question, Burbank's like most districts, we know we're supposed to be giving inclusive opportunities to all students. And we're trying, but we're working with, you know, a broken model. And, and, and we're not there yet. And I hope that we will be because it can be, it can change outcomes, it can change a lot of this. So I'm a huge champion and advocate for inclusive education. I used to teach a class at CSUN as an adjunct, the credential candidates. It was literally called co-teaching differentiated instruction and collaboration that works. And it, it does work, but it needs a lot of support. And what I would say about special education, there's also a budget reality. Like, um, it encroaches quite a bit on the general fund. And it's because a lot of special education services are reactive instead of proactive. So in a perfect world, any district, and especially a mid-sized district like Burbank, would be more proactive in its approach to special education so that we're not spending so much on the backend playing defense. I think we could do more to support teachers who want to help these kids, help these kids. And that's like much longer than this interview, but we could get into it another time.
So you use the magic, the magic letter B for budget? And I'll give you another B, which is bond. What are you going to do? Or number one, how do you feel about the bond measure that they're proposing? But when people are saying, we don't think the Board of Education is very financially responsible, you're going to take all this money. And who knows what they're going to do with it?
Right.
One of these most students have a, an independent board. But if they don't have an oversight board, if they appoint all their friends to the oversight board, you know, then all of a sudden it's their friends that are who will do what they want to do. How do you tell people, how it's your position on the bond? And number two, how do you feel about that oversight board to, for the money?
Right. So my, one of the things I'm promising is should restore trust, right? And what you just spoke to is the fact that you're right, there's a lot of distrust or mistrust of, um, you know, the current board and how they've been stewards of the taxpayers' money or not. And, and that's fair, right? That's fair. So for me, a couple of things, I do want to say, I think, yeah, I support the bond. I think we need the bond. And if people aren't aware, there is a bond on the ballot in November and we need to vote for it. I've worked in the buildings and, you know, Burbank Kai with the leaky library. And, uh, you know, my kids are in auditoriums right now with air conditioners that aren't functioning. I'll be back to school night in a few minutes. And, you know, I'm hoping they're working for the adults, right? So we need to pass it. I don't think we've done a great, great job of communicating the need or the why on that. But we do. And I don't know that the messaging's been great. And I've spoken to some folks and I'm not going to name drop, but some pretty in the know influential people in Burbank. And even though it's a lower threshold than when you're trying to pass a parcel tax, they're not optimistic that the bond's going to pass because they don't think we've done a good job of communicating or showing that we, for lack of a better word, deserve their trust again. And I, I, I hope that folks will look past that and give, they give BUSD the opportunity to do better this go round. Some of the folks who I've spoken to since deciding to run for this seat have said, there is supposed to be community oversight. I'm not offering my services anymore because the last time I did, I was dismissed, I wasn't listened to. We've got to reengage with those folks. There's some experts who know a lot more about how those things operate than educators or board members. And we do need to have oversight and community committees that hold the, the board and the district accountable for being steward to the taxpayers' money. So all we can do is try to pass the bond and move it forward and have a very open, transparent and communicative process as to what that's going to look like if someone's willing to volunteer their time, um, in providing that oversight. And I would want to see us do that so that we are, do a better job this go around. Cause again, my understanding is that, um, there were promises made with the last bond about having preventative maintenance schedule, allocating money for preventative maintenance. And somehow that didn't happen as leadership positions turned over and whatnot. These things were forgotten about, these promises were forgotten about. And now the buildings, you know, there are things failing that should last much longer than they've lasted. So we just have to learn from that and move it forward and get this bond passed for the students, because that's what it's all about. And then be the adults in the room who work together on protecting the buildings, the fields and, you know, everything else, the infrastructure and everything else that goes into it.
I agree on what you're saying. And I think, I, I just wonder if, one of the things that needs to be done is they need to have somebody in the district who is good on, on structures and buildings and codes and all that. Because I think they, you know, I know the things at Burrows are falling apart. And that's a very, that's a new school basically in, you know, within 20 years. And I just don't know if anybody was, the oversight was any good during the construction. And if that's a district that's not paying attention and saying, no, that's, you know, it, it was shortcuts were taken and nobody, the district knew it. So I think that's one of the things you'd have to, as a board, would have to consider.
If not on payroll for the district, like, you know, there are consultants who you need to listen to or community members with expertise who you need to listen to. And, and, you know, I don't know that it has to be an employee per se, but just very transparent oversight as to how we're doing it and how we're going to do it better this time.
Okay. So you've got a heck of a background and all the stuff you're telling, you're still not that old.
Used to be younger.
We all did. What got you motivated to run for, for this, uh?
Seat.
What, 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 what got you, you know, cause you're not a political guy, basically.
I'm not.
What got you motivated to do this and why are you running?
So honestly, I was not going to run, if I'm being fully transparent. Because once that was district, uh, I felt like the map was drawn pretty favorable to the incumbent. And it just didn't look like it was lining up for me this election. And then there was an unexpected resignation in trustee area one. And it coincided with an opportunity, I changed, I changed jobs. I went from being in downtown LA every day from 7:00, 7:30 AM to about 5:00 PM to having a job with a little bit more flexibility, um, including being remote. And I thought, you know, this, these things happen within a week of each other. I still have a little window here where I can decide to do this. And it's something that I wanted to, to do and to try. And so I am. So, you know, I'm not a huge person of fate, but I'm a big believer in fate. And I think sometimes fate, fit and timing just line up. So I'm hoping that this is just one of those things that lined up. I still care deeply about the Burbank community. My kids are in this district and, uh, you know, I'm telling people, I'm like, I'm running for my kids, your kids, our kids. Like, it's just, I, you know, it, it's, it's a district that I'm not done serving. And this seems like the possible next step, another way to do so. And again, I mentioned, I coach a team of 13 new ballplayers. And at this point, twelve of the 14 kids on the roster, I go to Luther or Huerta. I want to make sure that when they hit high school, they're able to be on a baseball field that, you know, still has sprinklers operating, that they're able to be in classrooms, that the air conditioning works when it's, what is it? 108 according to your thermometer? Like, these are important things. And so, you know, just running to try to continue, uh, you know, serving our city. You and I have been here, you're lifelong, I'm almost, although there's some people that say, well, you move to 18 years old, you're not a Burbankian, right? But I, I am, I am, right? A proud one. And I just want to see us be the best that we can be.
I think you, you understand the, the issues as well as anybody does. What I always do at the, near the end of the show is, you know, you know, your camera is. And I, I always give the candidate as much time as he wants to address the voter directly. Tell them why they should vote for you, why, why isn't, A, important vote? And why they should vote for you and what you're going to do for them. It's all yours.
Okay. Well, I don't have a stump speech prepared or anything like that. What I would just say is I love talking about education. And I will be transparent about the problems, but also want to talk solutions with you if I'm able to get the opportunity. I think I'm a good communicator. I, what I keep hearing is that communication's been lacking in recent years. And so I want to see us do that, uh, you know, reengage with our town, with our community, with our city. And I think I can help do that. I have 25 years in education and on all levels, uh, you know, taught K-12, led schools for more than a decade. So I think I have, uh, you know, a resume and a background in education that could serve these conversations well. And, um, you know, I'm not one that's trying to use this position as a stepping stone or anything like that. This is something I want to try for the betterment of BUSD. My kids experience, your kids experience, all kids experience. And so, uh, you know, when they're mailing in their ballot or when they show up to vote on November 5th, I hope that they'll, uh, remember my name for trustee area one and give me the opportunity to, you know, reengage our great city and BUSD and restore trust, simple as that.
Well, excellent. Like I said, you know, I have a, a good familiarity with each other. And, uh, and I, I said, I was going to be tough on you. I was going to give you the, the free pass today. And I think, I, I think people want to hear who you are and what you are. And that, that's what's important because, you know, I think you do, uh, I think you have some good, good ideas.
Good job.
Anyhow, that's it for another episode.